Okay. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. And so we're entering into a new chapter, 2024. Some new faces up here and so we're excited to get started on the work of the city. And I'm proud you guys have put your trust in us to take care of everyone. So with that, I'm going to call this to order. So the first order of business is we are gonna have a prayer if we can all stand to do the prayer and pledge allegiance. John K. Gill from First Church is going to open us with prayer.
You don't have to.
Well, Father God, we thank you for this evening, for this day. For as our mayor said, it's new season, Lord, we thank you. And Father, we ask for your hand upon us, we ask for your strength, your mercy, your grace, your love, to lead and guide us in all wisdom. And Lord, we bless every citizen of this city. Father, we thank you for the privilege to pray for each one and to serve and to lead according to your will. We ask that, Lord, during this meeting, we would be full of your wisdom and insight and be led by your Spirit. We pray all these things in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the God for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Bill, can you call the roll please?
Alderman Dale. Alderman Elder.
Come here.
Alderman Langford.
Here.
Alderman Peter.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderman Rubel.
Here.
Our presence at Alderman Dale.
Okay, next, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from our last meetings?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion?
Say.
Okay, motion by Bill Linder and second by David Langford. Next on the agenda, oh, sorry, sorry. Next, we have to vote to approve the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Black sign, motion passed. Next on the agenda are public comments. Mr. Lang?
My name is Ron Lang and I'd just like to make sure that the board knows about a particular item that's not on the agenda. I don't expect anything to be accomplished until tonight, but just so that you guys decide on purpose, not by accident. I want to talk about Miller Street. If you know Miller Street, Miller Street is a one-block street, very small. It connects Evans to Daughtry. Right now, it has thirteen homes on it. The Prime Commission has approved a subdivision that's gonna be added to Miller Street. That's gonna change it from thirteen homes to thirty-four homes. I'm sure everything is done properly in that subdivision, that's what the Prime Commission does. But the question that I want to put before the board is that I went out there and measured Miller Street in several places. The most narrow place I found was sixteen feet wide. The widest place I found was nineteen feet wide. If I read this map correctly, and I do not know if I'm doing it correctly, I think it is a forty-foot wide away. But I think that when you increase the people that live there and the traffic by one hundred and fifty percent, you probably should take a look at a road that's only sixteen feet wide and decide whether you want to leave it sixteen feet wider, do we want to make it wider, do we want to make it one-way? Just leave it like it is. But I'd just like the board to do it on purpose, whatever it is you decide, before you end up with, let's try to remember times two, forty-two more cars on that old street and we haven't done anything beforehand to prepare for that. Any question? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Okay, next, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Okay. There is no own business for this evening, so next we'll go on to new business. And we are gonna go to the downtown revitalization, and I think that we have Ray Adams here to give us a report. And Shannon Flanders.
Ben White.
Whichever, whichever.
Good evening. So several things to report. We have been working diligently over the last couple of weeks with the folks at DOD on both of our P D construction projects, the Courthouse Plaza as well as East Broad and East Main Street. Getting real close on the Courthouse Plaza. We jumped a couple of hurdles in the last couple of days. Their consultants are actually preparing red documents. So and State has asked for stamped construction plans. But at the moment, we're getting really, really close to being authorized to proceed with construction on the Courthouse Plaza. Cost is going up a little bit, as it's known as the opinion of probable cost. Not much, but it's gonna look a little bit, as you might imagine, over the last couple of years. Still in a reasonable range. We've had a little bit of delay on that project because in the final T W review, they decided that if you have one handicap ramp on the entrance to the courthouse, we needed to have two handicapped ramps. So because we had a second ramp in the construction documents, that triggered a whole new historical review of the site to see if the second ramp had any effect on the historical nature of the building. And they have deemed that it does not, so they're allowing us to move forward with that. The sidewalk project, last week or week before last, we got a fairly substantial surprise in that our consultants submitted a new statement of opinion of probable cost, and the cost is going up significantly. So I sort of sent out a challenging email today to them to justify each of the items that had increased significantly. We'll get a response probably from them in the next day or so and move forward. I'll fill out a communication to you as well. Again, it was a substantial increase and it doesn't look reasonable to me. So we're working on that as we speak. We have a third T D O D project that is not yet been initiated, that is the improvements to Cedar Street and Loc Street between South Church and Spring. I reached out to, the first step for us is to select our engineer consultants for that project. And you know, we've got to go through a process of signing up and a question qualification. So I reached out to T D O D today to ask them to give us a list of what they call own hall consultants for local programs projects. I think there's five of them. And asked them if we could simply solicit a question for qualifications from those five. I suspect that they're gonna say yes. And if so, between now and your next meeting, we will go out and solicit those qualifications and probably have a recommendation for you at the next board and all meeting. Mayor, do you want me to address the industrial park resolution while I'm standing up?
Yes.
Okay. Unrelated to downtown revitalization, recall that the city was successful in getting a Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development, it was called Site Development Grant, a few months ago. And that is for doing what's called new development studies at the fourteen-acre city industrial site. We found out we had originally proposed to do new development studies as well as prepared construction plans and actually grade the site for a hundred thousand square foot pad. And what we found out was you have to have these new development studies completed before you can even ask to get money for construction. Now, I will tell you that we were very favorably received when we presented an action for the construction project, but we were just out of style. So we solicited proposals, our request for qualifications from four environmental firms, two responding. We looked at those and deemed that the firm of S and M V was the most qualified. And that's for several reasons. They've done a ton of these, especially for Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development, Site Development Projects. They also have done two projects, at least for the county. They did the State Route 111 in Industrial Park. They did all the new development studies for that that helped us get to be the first site selected in Tennessee as a certified industrial site under the Site Development Program. They also did, when the county thought they were going to purchase and develop the Nelson Track just half-mile down the road, they also did the same studies there. So they're very familiar with the county location. Gave us a good price, thirty-one thousand eight hundred dollars. This grant is a ninety-ten, so what I mentioned tonight is to have you all authorize the lay of the scene with contract with S and M V for thirty-one thousand eight hundred dollars and also approve the grant amount of three thousand one hundred and eighty dollars.
Excuse me, three thousand what?
Three thousand one hundred and eighty dollars, ten percent of the contract.
And you have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion by Bill Linder, Alderman Bill Linder, and a second by Alderman David Langford. All in favor? All opposed? Black sign, motion passed.
I will forward you the contract and get your signature, get it back to the consultants.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
On the courts work project, there was some concern at the last downtown revitalization meeting about it running into Christmas because it's so late. Are we going to lay it to the next frame or something?
Oh, no, I suspect that we, because of that, I suspect that we will probably bid it in December and then have it start in late winter or spring. This will be a, it won't be terribly weather sensitive. So I think we could do that now. I would caution that prom on the square next year might be in jeopardy with construction. Because if it could go into May or June, and so we don't want those type of activities going on in a construction. But I think we can totally avoid any disruption of what we're doing Christmas.
Thank you.
I've got one more question. The South Church project, I know it's a big, big project. And I'll get my biscuit and drive through there every morning and see our city workers doing their job. And I commend them for the job they do. What is the timeframe again on this project? Because I know it's gonna look really good when it gets done.
So Bruce, it was initially about six months ago.
That's what I thought, yeah.
We sit in this room and have some of the most optimistic meetings with every player around the table. It just wasn't that easy.
No, I understand, I understand. I go through there and they're working every day.
So the city has approved a contract with Rogers Street to do the asphalt removal and the paving, and that is supposed to start in October?
Ain't gonna happen. Is it gonna happen?
I think so.
Okay, good.
Now, there's, the post office is involved.
Okay.
So.
Were they back, were they?
Making a file, the post office is, electrifying everything out there is is subject to also tying in the post office and electricing the post office. Now, I've actually told you a bit more than I truly know about what's going on, but that's not understanding.
So this is, what, where's the end date? We don't know.
Now, the last meeting Curtis informed us, the D R C, which I no longer remember. But Curtis said he hoped it'd be paving started by October the first.
And be finished by the twenty-third? I'm trying to remember those dates, but that.
I don't know. He didn't give us a finish date, he said, but he hoped to have it started by, well, now. But hoped to have it started October the first.
Well, and the good news is Rogers Street has the wherewithal and experience to get in and get out in a hurry.
That's gonna look really good for our community, and it's gonna add a lot to our.
I drove, I hadn't been by then, but I drove by a route today, just having those pedestrian lights on. So that would make a big difference.
Is that a question?
I guess.
Shannon.
So I have a couple other things for the Downtown Revitalization Committee. So today's Jean's birthday, so if he's watching, happy birthday, Jean. So he asked that I handle a few things for him. So first of all, the two things I have for downtown revitalization will need to be approved by this board. So the first thing, due to Arnold being elected and to hold the Alderman seat, it's gonna require him to step away from that committee. So that opened up a new seat on the Downtown Revitalization Committee. And our committee is recommending that he be replaced with Kendall Phillips. Jean has had a conversation with her and she is willing to serve as long as the board is on board with that.
I'll make that motion.
Well, thank you, Bruce.
I'll say.
All in favor? All opposed? Black sign, motion passed.
So secondly, we had the opportunity to apply for a Tourism Enhancement Grant. This grant was developed to help communities improve their tourism assets and increase tourism-related economic impact. There was a hundred thousand dollars up for grabs. And I mean, just to be real, we probably should have came to y'all with this in early August, but it came across my desk a little late. And the deadline to apply for this was August the twenty-third. And we spoke with the State Tourism Department along with the U C D D to determine what we could potentially do downtown to apply for this grant. It was up to a hundred thousand dollars that we could request. And the State Tourism Department recommended that, due to all of the improvements we have done downtown, that it would be best to apply for a downtown wayfining signage program. Now, my intent was to bring a picture of what some of these signs could potentially look like, and I ran off and left it on the printer at the office. But these signs are very tastefully done, Lori has seen them. And they would, hang on just a minute, I can get my notes. That hundred thousand would include a study to determine where these signs would be placed. It would include design fabrication and installation. We are hoping to be able to include some signage on the bypass at the four-way to point people downtown. As you all know, downtown Livingston gets missed often because it seems that Google Maps likes to send people down the bypass instead of through our town. And a lot of us, a lot of businesses, potential business gets missed because of that. So it will definitely allow our businesses down on the side streets to have more visibility. And it will increase traffic to those side streets, Central Park, other places downtown that are sometimes being left out because people don't realize, especially people that aren't from here, they don't realize that those businesses are there. Now, this grant does require a ten percent match. The Downtown Revitalization Committee has recommended that the match be covered out of the D R C funds that is set aside specifically for enhancing tourism in our downtown. That would be ten thousand dollars out of our downtown fund. And we should be scheduled, Phillips, you haven't got that number, I don't want you to tell me if you have. But we should have that number later this month, right?
Okay. You guys have some questions for Shannon?
I'm not sure that I know really what you're.
That's why, really, but, hang on. Who can fix this? I have them on my phone, if y'all want to just, I can show y'all real quick something similar. These signs were done in downtown High School, Alabama. And basically, what it will do, it will help to guide people to the Chamber, to City Hall, Central Park, show them where additional shopping is, say down South Church Street or down North Church, or even down Broad for that matter. Hopefully, this will help a little bit. But it's basically directional signage that will help the people who are here vacationing, tourists, know where to, where more shopping is, more dining and things like that.
Sorry, is there a certain style that they're going for? I might have missed that part.
Well.
One of the examples.
That particular sign that I just showed you will be very similar to that, but it will be more with our tourism branding. And of course, there is, you know, they'll design this for us and the city will be involved in those designs as well.
I'll make a motion for that.
And now, those in the picture, they're too big. Just put up a going down Church Street. Wouldn't it be more prominent to get, like in all the other little towns?
That's why we're doing, that's why the company that handles the signage, that's why they're gonna come in and do a study to determine, you know, how big the signs need to be in certain areas. So some areas will require a larger sign than others.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion by Rex Dale and a second by Alderman Linder. All in favor?
None.
All opposed? Black sign, motion passed.
Shannon, just wanted to say, thank, none of them, not on me. People in town do not realize how many millions of dollars have been funneled through the D R C to help improve downtown. Of course, the biggest was Central Park. Now, we got the courthouse, we got Church Street. And my thanks to y'all for working so hard to get these grants for us. They take a long time, three times as long as what D D O D tells you, but that's the way life goes.
True. We might have, if we do, if we are successful on this grant, we might have it done in two years. We'll see. So I do have some Chamber updates as well. I've been pretty good to y'all and not been lengthy the last few meetings. And sometimes I'm not even coming up, but I have some things to share tonight. So the State Department of Tourism, we have been allocated ninety-five thousand dollars for a Tourism Recovery Grant, and I think y'all heard me talk about that before. So we have spent half of that money so far. That money was allocated to add some plugins to our website that make it more functional and more of a tourism website and allow for a better visitor experience. So it pulls all data for our businesses locally from, well, for our events and our businesses from Google, Facebook, and Eventbrite. So as far as the event side of things, it's gonna, if you put your event, if a business or an organization is having an event, and they add it to Facebook, Google, or Eventbrite, it automatically pulls to our website. So as long as businesses and organizations are doing their due diligence to advertise their events, it's gonna show up on our website. So if it's happening in Alton County, you can go to discoverlivingstonian.com and it'll show you. Also, from a business standpoint, it pulls all the business information from Google. So I would strongly encourage all of our businesses and organizations in Livingston to make sure that their Google Business Profile is up to date with good photography. I've got some work ahead of me where this is concerned because some, you know, I'm sure people don't realize right now how important it is to have a good Google Business Profile. So if they're not real sure how to handle it, people can call and schedule an appointment with me and I'm happy to go over it with them. We are gonna start doing Google Workshops at the Chamber soon to teach people how to set up their Google Business Profile and to do it in a way that is gonna help their business be successful. We've also been doing some Google Ads. They sent me the links to those Google Ads today and they're absolutely beautiful, they look great. And I'm looking forward to getting some really good data out of visitors to our website and people who are going to our website using these, you know, from these Google Ads that are popping up. And I think they've got them on, I don't think, I know they have them on YouTube as well. So lots of great things happening there from a tourism standpoint and hope to continue to increase our tourism expenditures. Now, that being said, we got our 2023 tourism expenditures numbers from the state today. And we still have lots of room to improve. However, our direct visitor economic impact for 2023 was seven million, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in 2023. That, on average, is twenty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars a day. And that is just tourism expenditures. We are currently ranked eighty-one in the state out of ninety-five counties. I'm not real thrilled with that, however, in 2022, we were ranked eighty-three. We've moved up a little. So, you know, my goal is to, I'd love to see us around fifty at least, so that's something we can work on. The year-over-year change, we increased that spending by six point four one percent. So those are fairly good numbers. I'm happy with those numbers for the moment and hope to continuously see them increase as we are able to do more marketing and tourism efforts for the city and the county. And lastly, I'm gonna run through some events that are coming up. So Saturday, September seventh, at eleven a.m., we're having a grand Alton Avenue ribbon cutting with Porta Cello in Quanichello. I never can say that right, in Richmond. They recently relocated to two ten Tommy Johnson Highway to serve our community better with a larger space. And I'm sure they'd love to see everybody there at eleven a.m. on Saturday. We are having a tourism branding meeting on October the third and fourth. This is on our Facebook page and our website. So this is open to anyone in the community that would like to be a part of this tourism branding session. Now, this is not necessarily for Alton County completely, but it is our Upper Cameron Tourism Association. They are going through a rebranding right now. And they want all chambers, all. They are going through a rebranding right now, and they want all chambers, all municipalities, everybody in the Upper Cumberland area who depends on or works with a tourism mindset to be present to have a say in the direction that our region goes with their tourism branding. And again, that's the third and the fourth. One, can't remember right off the top of my head. One of them's at the Chamber, and one of them is over at Iron and Oak, but there are more details online, so all of you are invited to attend. Then, oh, yeah, this one I'm pretty excited about. So we're doing a, we are partnering with the Kids Closet on South Church Street to do a Kids Business Fair at Central Park. This will be held on October the twelfth from eight AM to one PM. This is for kids on linkages eighteen and below. So we're giving these young folks time to come and explore entrepreneurship, and they will be selling their own products, whatever it may be. Of course, a parent can be there to help them, but they essentially run the booth themselves. They are currently taking application, not applications, but you can get a vendor spot for twenty-five dollars. And all of the information to register is online, also on Facebook, on our website. Kids Closet is pretty much handling all of the applications, so you can even go by there and register at the store during their business hours. And lastly, just a reminder that we are starting the plan for following, and it is October the twenty-sixth, we are doing our haunted walking tours again, looking at adding a fall market at Central Park during that day as well. So there'll be a few new things added to following this year, and I will have all registration information out by end of business day tomorrow. And that's all. Do y'all have any questions? Busy. Very busy.
Thank you, Shannon. And I echo what Arnold just said about the DRC, because it's been a really good thing for Livingston.
Absolutely. It definitely has been. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Craig, do you have something else?
I do. One thing that I forget, and then to follow up on something that Shannon said, recall that as we got the state sales tax reimbursements every year, about a hundred and thirty-five hundred and forty thousand dollars of that went to First National Bank to repay our loan. And Phyllis, I think I'm right that we paid our full loan this year. So this coming, in a few weeks, we should be getting a check. You know, it was over five hundred thousand dollars last, and I suspect it will be latter more this year. That will go one hundred percent to the work of the, now, now, the revitalization committee and the board. So we'll have a hundred and thirty thousand, forty thousand dollars more spend on bricks and mortar, et cetera, than we had in the past. I think I mentioned last reading that Livingston had been selected by the Tennessee Department of Transportation for a traffic signal modernization program. The state traffic folks are supposed to be in town next week or the following week to do an inventory. And so that, that just lets you know if you see some DOD trucks in the square, the control box open, and folks missing around inside there, that's what that will be about, I think, ordinarily. See if dollars to get in the box and know where all the equipment is such. Recall that 2014, 15, when we did our crosswalks, et cetera, we took the initiative at that time to put in all the conduits and all the pool boxes for the future pedestrian signals. So we won't be tearing up anything in and around the square. They'll simply be pulling cable and putting up pedestrian pedestals and crisscrosses and that stuff. Look forward to that project proceeding forward.
Hey, Craig. Our grant runs, I think I'm correct, Phyllis, it runs out next year, right? Twenty-five?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven now?
Yeah. I think it started in '07, and it goes through...
Twenty years, right. Have you heard any talk about them? Maybe it's been in that grant?
There was a, there was a state representative from Western City who's represents one of the six counties who tried diligently last year to get it extended indefinitely in the dining committee. And I don't know of any efforts now that, before the legislature to do. Now, I have heard from several other counties who are very envious of the six counties and want to know how they can participate in program. Well, you know, the program is what it is, and no way for anyone else to participate in it.
Thank you. Next on our agenda was supposed to be Allison Hudson, but she had a family emergency and is going to try to get, someone will be here, whether it's her or someone else from Magnolia River, next board meeting. So next, let's move on to item number three, which is property magnates update with Walter Rutherford and Beth Stevens.
So for chapter one miscellaneous, we have two hundred and eighty-seven properties have been in violation, two hundred and seventy-six properties are now in compliance. We have eleven are still in violation, one in state owned and is in litigation with their heirs. And we have two that have had winnings placed on the property, and five were claimed by the city. For chapter two, abandoned, wrecked, dismantled, and inoperable vehicles, we have twenty-nine vehicles have been in violation, twenty-eight vehicles are now in compliance, and one is , still has time, the time hasn't expired to correct it. For chapter four, for slum clearance, we have sixteen structures have been considered as slum. Three have been boarded up and safe, five been torn down by the owner, and eight have been restored. Under chapter five, junkyard, we have three properties cited at this time. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the hospital security agreement. And Chief Smith, will you come and give us an update?
Good evening, Mayor. We have for a long time been a part of LRH's security program that they have over there with the needs and all that they have for a long time, and we have put great effort toward that. You have received a letter of the MOU and the letter that we went out. When taken the position as chief police in Livingston, it was a great concern myself about taking on the extra responsibilities besides just what we already had. That program was already started and already going along. I met with Mayor Hayes before then. We met with the hospital and had talks about what can we do to enhance and try to keep someone over there. So they upped the pay, and we went out and put people folks. We had great success at the beginning to get somebody to come and help us be a part of that program. At this time, it was brought to my attention, again, I had a gentleman that was retired, and another one wanting to transfer out, and another one that was actually leaving the law enforcement job. So we start a little bit, and you go back. But my real job is to make sure the citizens of Livingston is protected by the, by road police and make sure we answer calls. I can't take anybody off of that. I found that was a great strain to our department to sell. When the hospital was making payments to us to cover that, I went to Pangaray and Marilla at that time and spoke with them about the situation, made a agreement to go over and speak with the hospital, and we did. Mr. Tim McGee told them of our problems and the crossroads that we came to. We read over a MOU and came to the agreement of a letter that was written by our attorney. Attorney has sent the letter over, it's been placed in Tim McGee's hands, and we are no longer, we're asking for a separation from LRH, continue for the contract time and what it asks for, and then separate running. By using that word separation, does not mean that we're walking off and leaving our great hospital. We're there, I'm called. You call us, they're going to call us, we continue, we're going back to what we used to do, and the call will come over there. I did know and have been told that they are looking at a security company. We're still going to do our job for them, we're still going to try our best to protect them and do everything we can. I just don't have the manpower to send somebody over there twelve hours on a shield, seven days a week. Unfortunately, the looking law enforcement name is as great as it used to be. There ain't a lot of folks out there that wants to come and be a part of that job, there's a select few, and it's becoming a few in between, and it's such a hard effort to do. So I found it put us in jeopardy and found that it was sending money out that we was not able to accrue or get because of not having no one there. Mr. McGee understood. I didn't want to take the man's money or the hospital's money and not have somebody there to continue the work that needed to be done. My job was safe to that. I felt that it was a situation, it's time to have a separation and have a real talk. It was time to move on. And I'm asking the board to accept the letter that was written, and they set the terms in MOU, it's time to separate after sixty days.
Okay, we have a question?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Linder, a second by Arnold Proctor.
Good question.
Any questions?
Got a question. Did he pay us by the year to have a policeman down there, or did he pay us monthly?
We would send out a bill to them at completion.
At completion?
Monthly, okay, of the time then, yes.
Okay. Do we have to pay any penalty or anything to get out of this?
We do not at this time, no.
Okay. So he will more or less just quit paying us when we done?
Yes, yes.
To sixty days from today or from when the letter was written?
Yes, and then the end, end of October first, November. And not until Mr. McGee, if you have any problems with McGee over still here, or you're still here, not going to war, it's just, it's a, do, we're still going to do the job over there. And anything that calls, they're going to call us, we're going to go over there. We're still going to do walkthroughs. We're not leaving these folks behind. It's just not fair to take a man's money if you can't provide any of the services that you're telling you are providing.
Any other questions? Okay, let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Black sign, motion passed. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is appointment of Nathan Dale to our Board of Zoning Appeals. Cynthia Simmons had to step down from this position, and I am recommending Nathan Dale to the board.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Black sign, motion passed. We'll have to do the paperwork with Nathan.
Mayor, one thing in reading the past minutes that we got this week, we tend to use these acronyms, you know, EZA. I had no idea what that was, so I looked it up and found out. But it would be nice if we would put in the minutes or as we're on recording, like you did, you did state what it was, really. But that makes a big difference to, you know, people out there that don't deal with this every day.
Right, we will, we'll make sure that that happens going forward. Okay, next on the agenda is to appoint Lori Richards to the Planning Commission. We received a letter from Matilda Speck saying that she could no longer serve on the Planning Commission, and she's been very valuable to the Planning Commission for many, many years, so we thank her for her service. Lori is not here tonight, but she has accepted to be on the board of the Planning Commission this week. So if anyone has any questions, or if anyone wants to make a question?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Lightford and a second by Alderman Bruce Elder. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Black sign, motion passed. Next on the agenda, because we're all new here, we have to elect us a new vice mayor. So we're missing a few people and adding a few valuable people to our board. So at this time, I'm going to open, open up for nominations for vice mayor to begin starting tonight. Do I have a question?
I'll nominate Rex Dale.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a nomination of Rex Dale for vice mayor by Lance Rubel and a second by Bruce Elder. Any comments? Okay, I think...
Well, there's a vote.
It would be a great honor.
Yeah, I guess that's a good question.
Ken and Bill again, so, yeah, definitely be honored to do it.
Okay, at this time, we're going to take a vote, and we'll do it by real call, Ms. Phyllis. Alderman Lightford?
Yes.
Alderman Linder?
Yes.
Alderman Proctor?
Yes.
Alderman Rubel?
Yes.
Alderman Dale?
Yes.
Alderman Elliott?
Absolutely.
Motion passed. Okay, motion passed. We have an anonymous, or unanimous, a unanimous vote, so Rex Dale will be our new vice mayor. So congratulations. Okay, the next, next and final thing on the agenda are, with that being said, we need to have names on our bank signature cards. So those names would be Rex Dale as vice mayor, and I guess I need to make a motion for our third person. So do we have a motion for someone to be our third signature nomination, for somebody to be our third person for signature on our card, on our faculty?
I'll make the motion to make it Bill Linder.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for Bruce Elder to make Bill Linder our third signature, and a second by David Lightford. All in favor? Say aye. All opposed? Black sign, motion passes. Okay, so on the signature card will be myself, Rex, and McGee. So, okay. Any other business? Alderman? Okay?
Lender.
Otherwise, we have a motion to adjourn? Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Any adjournments?